Coming to you straight from the Rio Grande and beyond, and beyond. Broadcasting to the four corners of the globe. So grab your seat, your coffee, or your sundowner.
Okay, everybody, here we go.
On point, as always. This is Gloves Off. Gloves Off. Gloves Off is always on point. Bringing you the best on current issues, community affairs, and the happenings around us. This segment of Gloves Off is brought to you by the best. So pay them a visit, check them out. This is Gloves Off.
Back at you with Gloves Off, and today we have City Councilman Dr. Martinez. How are you doing today?
Good, sir. Thank you for having me.
Well, tell me, you've got how many months now? Four?
Yeah, going on five months. That's right, going on five months. It's been a whirlwind, to say the least. We've been, uh, well, we started and we got going really quick. We've had a lot of different things that have come up, a lot of different issues that we've had to tackle. So it really hasn't been a trial by fire so far. Um, we've tried to, I think, pursue the same goals that we set out from the very beginning, which is getting back to the basics, working on infrastructure. Um, so some of the main things that you've seen me talk about and bring up to City Council have been roads and, um, infrastructure investment as far as water and wastewater, um, improving our parks as well. Um, we've done that, the pocket parks, and also a lot of changes that we've made to North Central Park. Um, trying to decrease taxes and getting money back to, um, people. Uh, and then also, um, uh, just cohort of just a bunch of different little issues that pop up every day that constituents have concerns about, um, from paving roads to speed bumps that they want, or lighting issues, or safety concerns. Something we've had some issues with around about. So it's been a whirlwind. Uh, it's been very enjoyable, very pleasant. Uh, it is, um, different than I thought it was gonna be. Uh, I do anticipate, I did anticipate at the time commitment, um, I just, I didn't anticipate how much people really needed a voice. I, I, I felt it when I was running for council. I felt that people were really seeking representation, but once I got in there, I recognized the representation that they were really looking for. You know, for, for instance, tonight I had a, or last night I had a homeowners association meeting, um, that, uh, they asked me to go and I went and, you know, they just wanted to voice their concern regarding a variety of issues. Uh, and I was able to talk to them about some roads that we're trying to construct, um, um, some north-south thoroughfares that we're trying to create, uh, to alleviate some of the congestion you see on McPherson, especially during peak hours, uh, and how I hope that would take some, well, some traffic away from the residential roads. And so, uh, but again, things that they live every day, that they were hoping, um, somebody would listen to them, and, and that's what we're trying to provide. So it's been great.
Um, we're talking about roads because for the longest time, kind of that sector where you're at, that district was kind of blocked off. It's only had two, basically thirty-five, uh-
And the Loop.
And McPherson and the Loop.
That's right.
Um, what's gonna happen with the Springfield? Is that gonna be moving forward?
So we actually put that on the agenda a while back, uh, but Springfield is a very lengthy process. Um, we own the, the vast majority of the land, uh, but there is some rearranging that we have to make based on the, on, on where we expect the trajectory of the road to go. Right now, the current plan called for crossing, um, the creek there, the Manoas Creek, several times, I think up to three times. And so we're trying to minimize that. We're trying to make it to, we'll only cross this one time. Um, that is, I think, gonna cost us a little bit more in, um, development costs because the original plan was already ninety-seven percent, uh, and there's a cost associated with that, several hundred thousand dollars. The problem is that if we, if we do that plan that were already existed, it may add significant costs, um, in bridges, um, and in construction costs, um, to mitigate the, um, what we're going to damage on the creek. And so if we can get a better alignment of the road, we're hopeful that we can actually decrease the overall cost of the project by crossing the creek in one time. And it also gives us significant opportunities to beautify that whole North Central Park West, um, and, and kind of widen it, make some beautiful detention and retention ponds and there, and a lot of hiking bike trails. And my, my grand plan in that area is to have Springfield connect all the way down to, to Del Mar, all the way up to San Isidro. And there's a lot of development that's gonna occur there, that's gonna be a good development, uh, what I would call, you know, good, proper density development, uh, and then some commercial development as well. And, and, um, we're trying to also, while we're doing that, we're thinking strategically of, of having, um, more regional parks in that area. And so Divine Mercy Park, as we did a tree planting not so long ago. We added some picnic tables and some benches. And the overall plan is to get that land that's right there next to Divine Mercy, um, Park and, um, and take it on, create hiking bike trails that connect to Shiloh Hiking Bike Trails and connect Shiloh Hiking Bike Trails all the way over east to North Central Park. And so we're already trenching underneath McPherson to see, cause there are some, there are some concrete corridors underneath there that we may be able to walk across or bike across, so people don't have to cross McPherson at all. So we're looking at it from a very strategic, um, a very long-term plan perspective, but Springfield should, um, be part of the budget process this year. But I don't think it's gonna take one year of budget to get it right. We're gonna have to save our pennies because, um, each, I think there's three or four phases, and each phase has a cost upwards of five to ten million dollars. It's a very large project.
Sure, and it's, and it's been one that's been lengthy in time as well. But when, once it's done, I think it's gonna be a benefit for Laredo.
Oh, absolutely. And, and we actually have another road that we're working on, and this is one of the first things that I, I, I started, is I recognize that people that travel, um, from Del Mar to, uh, to Shiloh, and this is where I have my house, your house, they don't have any other, uh, point, uh, other than going all the way to International or taking the loop. And so we're actually trying to connect, um, Plantation East to Backwoods where Orchard Elementary is, and that we hope is going to have, um, again, um, hiking bike trails throughout there, uh, on the sides, uh, and then more of a narrower street so we don't get a lot of speed, cause you know, our city, we're trying to decrease the amount of speed in our city to prevent accidents and deaths. Uh, they could call, you know, it's called Vision Zero, but, but additionally, what it's gonna do is provide that outlet, that, that, that direct connection all the way north, um, through Backwoods, and all that area is developing, so we're, we're very excited about that. We're close to that. Hopefully we can, we can get that across the finish line. That's a smaller project, but if it, if it works, it will, I think, alleviate a lot of traffic for us.
That's excellent. You said that there was some other concerns. What are the other concerns you thought about safety? What's the main concern in safety in our area? Or in that area? Not, not the whole Laredo, but the north side of Laredo?
Well, we did have the, the concern that I had, um, uh, when I was running, a lot of people were concerned about break-ins that had been occurring in certain areas, but we've increased patrols significantly in, in that area. We, I sit on the Public Safety Advisory Board.
Sure.
And so we have done, um, I mean, the police department is doing a fantastic job of trying to patrol the area, and they really do. My hat's off to them. Those guys do a fantastic job. I mean, they're a well-oiled machine, and there's a reason why our city, uh, our city's crime rate is much lower per capita than many other places, um, and definitely lower than Washington DC and Austin.
Of course, yeah, of course.
And so we're an extremely safe city here, and that, that's a testament to the hard work of the police force. And I actually, um, I've been proud to work alongside them, trying to work on several grants that we've been trying to bring into, into Laredo, uh, on a state level, and we've been able to accomplish that, uh, at least pushing them in the right direction. Uh, we hope that, that soon they'll come across the finish line. It looks like they can. Um, and, uh, and if we do, uh, then that's gonna add even more safety, um, to, to, as far as prevention of gangs and, and alleviation of those concerns, um, which they tend to, you know, they try, they tend to be the ones that, that are the perpetrators of all these crimes. Um, safety concerns tends to be traffic-related, and then also pedestrian and bicycle and motorcycle. Right now, you know, you actually have, um, motorcycle, uh, excuse me, Bike Safety Month. It's Bike Awareness Month, I think. And so, um, these are things that we're, that, that, that we're concerned about. Pedestrians are concerned, bicyclists are concerned, motorcycles are concerned. Um, roads, uh, they lead also to, uh, uh, safety concerns because you have a lot of pot holes and, um, the lines aren't painted correctly. It's hard to tell what you're supposed to do. So I know City was already working on it, but I stressed, um, that I needed to have all the lines in, in District Six repainted, anything that was faded. And so I actually went around and took pictures of all of them, and I've been trying to get them painted. We're not completely done, cause they, they kind of go in a pattern, but, but I'm trying to emphasize the importance of, of this. And I actually learned a term a few days ago called urban. Um, uh, they call it, uh, tactical urbanism, where you paint something and by painting it, you, you know, you're kind of teaching the public on what they're supposed to do. Well, you know, you, if you paint a line on the ground, you hope they're gonna respect the line and then have pedestrians be able to cross. But if they don't see lines, what they do is they creep up to the intersection, right? And so they get closer and closer to the intersection, and pedestrians can't cross. You see them bowing out from the traffic, and these are safety concerns. Um, so those are other safety concerns that constituents have had and talked to me about. Uh, but the big thing is speed. We had a lot of, uh, we had some accidents that were occurring in, um, uh, around the new San Isidro Elementary, um, and, uh, we had a lot of speed that was occurring on International heading towards the high school, and there was a lot of traffic. And so high schoolers and parents would kind of, would veer off and cut across to, um, forgot the name of the road, but it's another road that runs parallel, uh, and, uh, that happens to run right where San Isidro Elementary does. And there was no stop signs there, and there was no speed limit signs there, and so people were going very quickly. Um, and so when I, when these alarms were raised, um, a few months back, uh, we tried to expedite to get some things done. Um, that didn't happen quickly enough. There was an accident, or two accidents that occurred there, which really upset me. And so then I went to police, again, through this, um, through this Public Safety, um, Commission, and I said, "We need to fix this now." And they did, and they, they fixed it. And so now there's stop signs, uh, and, um, speed limit signs all throughout those two areas, and there's a new stop sign there on, on San Isidro, which, uh, which on International starting. Um, you know, people are a little upset about it because it's delaying traffic, um, before it gets to the high school, right? And it's backing people up, which, you know, you fix one problem, and then all of a sudden you recognize you have another problem, and we need another exit for the high school. And so we're looking at, we're looking at options to be able to get another exit, to get out, um, uh, of, of that United, um, high school area. Uh, but anyway, so that was another concern that we had, and, and we're trying to see if we can address this, this traffic backing up issue right now, cause I, I know it's tough, you know, trying to get to work and trying to drop off your kids or all that stuff. But, but again, if I'm gonna err, I'm gonna err on the side of safety.
Of course, that's, that's basically the main concern. I think now everybody's kind of in tune with that, safety first. Back then, it was kind of like, "It's done, and you guys deal with it." And now it's kind of like, "No, we have to deal with it. Let's, let's deal with the safety." And I think now the attitude is safety, and I think I see that through the consensus of all the council right now.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're pretty much, um, I think across the board, uh, you have a council that's very committed to public safety. They really are. Um, and public safety goes a long way, uh, in, in policymaking, right?
Sure.
And not just, uh, not just saying that, "Well, we want a safe city," but actually taking meaningful steps to ensure that we have a safe city. And some things are, I didn't understand before, um, I didn't have a clear idea as to why they did certain things. So for instance, you know, you see bike lanes on some of these busier roads, and you talk to people that are on the streets, and they'll tell you, "Well, there's absolutely no room for these bike lanes. Why in the heck are we doing this?" You know, "Why are we, you know, why are we sharing our roads with bicycles?" And I, and I thought that it was because we needed bike lanes to be competitive on a state level, right? We have to check those boxes off and saying, "Hey, um, when we, when cities come and look at us, they want walkability and they want bikeability, especially to work." So those things are important when you're comparing series to other cities. Then I recognized, now I recognize that it's different, and I've learned the evolution of this, and some of it is because narrower streets tend to go, people tend to go slower. So they have to be more cautious, and they slow down. And so part of this Vision Zero is to narrow streets. When you look at our comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan actually calls for, but again, you fix one thing, and you gotta fix another thing. So as we get to these narrower streets, one of the safety concerns is that we may not be able to get our fire department trucks in there.
Sure.
Uh, correctly. And so now we have to, as we plan going forward, we have to make sure that we're shrinking the size of our fire trucks to be able to access all these points.
Well, you know, there's, there's, bike lanes are, you know, I used to rent bikes, and we used to BMX and everything else when we were kids. You know, we used to use, uh, we used to freestyle and use a drain of the mall before, and we were, and we were growing up.
Yes, me too.
And that's what, that's what we did, you know? And, uh, so bikes, you know, won trophies and so forth.
I was, I was terrible.
Believe me, we, we, we had a quarter pipe outside and the whole nine yards, we had ramps, and I mean, the whole, believe me, you know? Uh, and, uh, so I understand the safety for bikes. I understand the safety for bike lanes, and, uh, and, but I think the new projects, the new divi, the new subdivisions being done, the new construction, I think that's where we need it. But stuff like in, in the old parts of town where it was, and you wanna dissect everything else, I think it's gonna cause a big havoc control there and there.
And, and again, I thought the same thing, and I continue to think that we have to be very cautious of how we utilize them. Um, but the evidence that I'm starting to look at as I'm going through these things and trying to learn is that slower roads cause, cause more flow. So cars tend to speed when they have wide lanes and they have this Autobahn-type, um, philosophy. Like if I, if I feel that I'm not, there's nothing here, I can go quickly, right? Cause my lane is, you know, this big. But if your lane is this big and you're closer to the car, you anticipate that you're gonna slow down. This is just natural human condition, and slower traffic flows better. This does. And so, so again, I, I think it, it's a, it cuts both ways. You have to be cautious in how you use them, but you also have to use it as a tool to hopefully have, um, more meaningful, uh, flow of traffic. And if it means, you know, stopping some streets and making some one ways just to properly plan your city, then you do that. Um, these are things that we have, um, you know, city engineers and, and, and then planning departments, uh, that, that you wanna have people that really have backgrounds in these things, that can utilize these tools in, in the master plan phase and the new development, and they can go back. The problem is the cost associated with going back and retroactively doing these things. It's always cheaper to do it as you're going, as opposed to going back and doing it again. And so that, that's the, that's where you have to be cautious, because you are trying to solve a problem, but, but if you're spending a lot of money on it, then, um, I, I don't know that there's, you can put a cost to safety, uh, but, but I do know that the taxpayers are watching this right now, uh, and they're making sure that we're spending our money correctly. And, and sometimes I, I feel people get concerned about some, some bike lanes, uh, but, but overall, I think that for our city, you can, you can see that it's gonna be a good thing. But again, it's a safety concern.
And what happens is the areas that you represent, the area you represent in the south and kind of the northwest, those is, that, those areas are the ones that are actually grown.
They tend to be the higher growth, yes.
The, the area that's gonna have more housing is gonna be your district and as well as the south. Those are the ones that are actually gonna have more. Most of the other ones are already confined. So in Laredo is no longer, you know, the downtown became downtown, became kind of obsolete. This area is kind of like middle Laredo downtown kind of area. And then now we have, uh, Del Mar and McPherson, and so it's kind of like divided. More of the businesses have gone down eighty-three south and towards McPherson loop area.
Yeah, and so there's, there's a couple things there, you know? One is, as a council, we've made a commitment to downtown.
Sure.
And in fact, we just, um, we recently made a, a decision to invest a significant portion or a significant amount of money into infrastructure, um, which is going downtown. Um, but this downtown renovation of infrastructure is important because that allows us, uh, the next phase, which is gonna be, um, construction of parking garages, uh, incentivizing of businesses. We have a TURS that's ongoing that's raising revenue. Um, we have several empowerment zones in that area that are also, um, trying to garner business down there. And so I think the city's extremely committed to improving downtown, and, and you're always concerned about investing, 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 and not getting anything. Um, but that's not the way you look at it. You kind of have to look at it, um, like people invest in the stock market. So you put a certain amount of money in, and there's ups and there's downs in the stock market, but the overall stock market goes up over time, right? And so even though you're investing a little at a time, investing a little at a time downtown, you know that eventually it's going to pay that dividend, because as long as you're committed to it, it will pay the dividend of having a significant, very robust, very diverse, uh, downtown with a lot of businesses. And I commend Councilmember Valley, who's been really leading the charge in a lot of this, and I've been trying, I've been trying to, uh, to support him in all his endeavors to do that. Uh, so, so I agree that there is a lot of growth that's occurring on the outskirts, but I also believe that, um, we're kind of a tale of two cities. We have this urban development, this, excuse me, suburban development that's occurring, but we also have this urban revitalization that's occurring, and, and we can do both. We just have to be cognizant that, that they're not mutually exclusive, they're occurring at the same time. We, we just have to try to incentivize people to try to move into some of these older neighborhoods. And we've already made the investment, or we're going to make the investment in the infrastructure, and we hope that we can get people to try to move closer to downtown. I mean, not force them, just, just incentivize them so that we can get that, that, that commerce going down there, because I think it would be beautiful. I mean, we have a historic, beautiful downtown that I marvel, uh, marvel, it's marvelous, and it rivals other, other old town, um, uh, squares, even, even New Orleans, to be honest with you.
No, no, you're absolutely correct. And, um, but, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna take a while. It's gonna take a lot of planning, it's gonna take a lot of decision-making, it's gonna take a lot of momentum from the city.
And, and, and we have to be firm in our decision. In other words, we can't just tiptoe in and then no, and then tiptoe in and then no. People, people have to recognize it, that we've made a commitment to downtown, and, and municipalities that do that, that make a commitment to one project, they'll make it succeed. They will make it succeed. You know, obviously, we wanna have our checks and balances, we wanna make sure that we're doing, that we're not spending incorrectly, that, that we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, using policies that other, other cities have, and then implementing it in our own way, um, that what's appropriate for us. But again, we are committed to downtown, and that's important, because people, I think when they sense how committed, um, this council is and previous councils have been to downtown, I think they feel more comfortable going in and spending their money and investing their money there. Um, and so, uh, I hope that people do feel comfortable, because I'm telling you, you gotta get into downtown now, cause I'm telling you, ten years from now, twenty years from now, that is gonna be a booming, beautiful, happening place, uh, and it's gonna take time, and we, we don't expect it to happen overnight. But if we, we keep firm in this, I'm telling you, we're gonna be deeply proud of it. I think we already should be, but we're gonna be way more, more proud of it in the future.
Those are the plans for the city, Wes.
As far as the city?
Mm-hmm.
How about, no, sir, there's like-
Well, how about bringing in businesses into the city? Have they, have they-
There's a significant amount of work that's being done. I mean, that's, uh, when you think about it, we just spent, what, fifteen minutes talking about safety, or, you know, we talked about, you know, ten, fifteen minutes about, uh, downtown, but I can tell you that we're having hours, hours, and hours of conversation regarding these things, and hours and hours and hours of conversation regarding. And just like we're doing that, we're also having hours and hours and hours of, of conversations of how to bring in commerce, how to incentivize businesses, how to team up with, um, with the, uh, Laredo Economic Development Corporation, how to team up with, um, uh, Laredo College, uh, even with Tang U, uh, and with the county to do these, you know, large, um, attractive offers to businesses to try to go get these businesses and bring them into Laredo. And so we are, um, we are working towards that. I will say that we've actually reached out to several people, we reached out to several companies that for them to come in here. Um, we've had some good success with some cold, uh, food storage that has happened recently, and it looks like more cold food storage wants to come this direction. Um, so yeah, we are actively doing that, but we continue to be, um, investing in the trade industry, which is our bread and butter, although we are trying to diversify our economy. And we hope that light manufacturing, and we hope that these cold food storage places and, and, and even the, the, um, uh, the fruits and vegetable trade wants to make their home down here in Laredo. And so we, we are, we're definitely working towards that as well.
That's good to hear. You know, that's, that's actually good to hear. How about secondary water source? What's going on with that? A lot of, I've heard a lot of different, different things going on, and-
So the cost of secondary, you know, historically speaking, my understanding was that there was a rate increase that was done a long time ago, um, for a secondary water source. And then they decided to, um, take that money and, and instead of, you know, piping down water, which would have been very expensive, um, they, uh, they looked at, uh, at a water plant as the, the solution. Unfortunately, it's just, you know, putting another straw in the same, um, in the same source, which is, you know, where we, our river, where we get all our water. Um, they hoped that they would be able to create more quantity of water, um, but if the river dries up, then we're the same focus as it's not. Now, we haven't seen that happen since the fifties, and, and that was, of course, before we had all the Amistad dams and all that stuff. So we hope that that doesn't happen again, but, uh, but we do have to be ready. Um, I, I don't really, I, I'm trying to gather all the information on secondary water, but I will tell you that I'm not looking at it as a secondary water yet, because I think that it's cost prohibitive at this point, and maybe I'm wrong, but I think it's cost prohibitive, um, to pipe it all the way down here, the desalination process for certain things. And so there's, even though the price has come down, uh, and I don't know the exact amount right now, but, but back when they were looking at it, I think it would cost us twice as much for, to have our river water, and then it would cost twice as much to bring water down here. But we are looking at emergency water source availability. Can we find ways, uh, of either creating a lake, um, here dredging out in, uh, Casablanca and getting a memorable understanding with the state and with the county? We're looking at a lot of different options, but, but we're just in the beginning phases, and I think we're actually going to have some items coming up on the agenda, um, this Monday to start trying to figure out ways of doing this. I have a grand plan of something that I wanna do, but it's big, and, and I don't know that we can do it, but I have talked to environmental engineers and to hydrologists, and it looks like it is possible. I just don't know the cost of it yet, uh, and I don't know whether, um, it's the feasibility as of yet, and so I'm not really ready to bring it up, but I think we do have some options available. Um, there are some people that claim that, that, you know, if we sell our water, we have Class A water, Class B water rights, if we can produce it and sell it, maybe we can make some money and actually pay for everything that we need. I don't know. I don't know the answers to those questions yet, but I am gonna find out.
Well, thanks. That's, that is something that, that everybody's always been wondering about for the last several years, and I think now we have a core group of council that are, are all in, kind of in the same boat, kind of in the same talking plane amicably. You know, there was no, no bad feelings, no ill feelings as, as before. I think now it's a different, I think it's total different energy that's in the council.
Yeah, well, part of that is because I think you have to have professionalism, and, and I think you, we have people that are very professional on council, and I think that historically, some of these individuals, they clashed, and, and, you know, I didn't, I don't know the history, I just know that when I came in, people would murmur that there was a lot of friction between these people. There was competing groups, and you used to hear stuff about gangs of this and gangs of that and all this. Um, but I always believed that if you showed professionalism and decorum and you were a statesperson or a statesman, um, and you were able to talk to people and collaborate and, and try to understand where they were- and you were able to talk to people and collaborate and, and try to understand where they were coming from. And maybe we're not always gonna agree, but you shouldn't take those things personally, right? You have intelligent individuals that are making decisions based on what they think their constituents' best needs are. And that doesn't mean that you're wrong or they're wrong. That doesn't mean that you're right or they're right. You just, you may have differences of opinion, but at the end of the day, I don't doubt that any member of council has the best interests of the city in mind. I'm telling you, I do not doubt it for one second. We think differently. We come from different backgrounds.
Sure.
We do different things. Some people are business people. Some people just, you know, they're, they're very grassroots people. We have lawyers. We all think differently.
Sure.
But that doesn't mean that any one of those individuals doesn't have their heart in the right place. And I guarantee you that because I spend time with every single one of them. They are good people.
No, you're, you're absolutely correct. Every single one of them, you know, even, even the past city council. Everybody meant, but I think it was just personalities just clashed.
Sometimes.
And I, I don't think it was, I don't think it was a council. I think it was a big, when you all went in, things changed. You all kind of, kind of started root plowing what was there in the past, you know?
Yeah, we, we've tried to collaborate. You know, I've, I've tried to, to reach out to all of them on a personal level and just get to know them as people. You know, we can't discuss things other than, you know, just, you know, I'm going to present this or whatever. But again, just in talking to these people and just chit chatting and having a meal and that kind of stuff, you can tell you're people. And so I, I think that that professionalism and that decorum that you're seeing now is a reflection of the fact that they had some ongoing feuds before. And they recognized that it wasn't helping them. It was only hurting the constituents, right? So you had certain people that could get things done and then you had certain factions that couldn't get anything done. And the only people that get hurt in those sorts of situations are the people that you're supposed to represent. And so now I think you're seeing a different perspective. You're seeing, hey, let's collaborate. And if we can collaborate, everybody can get something, right? So if we all get something, we can get the city moving in the right direction. It doesn't mean that everybody's gonna get everything they want. It's not the way it works. There's compromise. You know, I've, I've, you know, I just started and I lost my first share of things, but, but that's okay. I mean, that's just the, that's the nature of this democratic process. But I'm glad that it's occurring evenly and fairly right now. And I hope that, that I can do my part to get that continuing that way.
Correct. What, what do you see? Do you think, do you think our police, because we talked, we talked about safety, we talked about gangs, those sort of kind of words that were used in the beginning. And our police do a great job. Our first responders are excellent. Okay, here you're in. And do you think the gang issue is, is actually a problem throughout?
Well, yes. I, I think that, you know, we were privy to certain information that I think they finally brought to light regarding a very large task force that they had been working with DPS and with county officials because they were seeing certain patterns of enforcement that was occurring through gangs for criminal element in Mexico. And, and so I think it is a problem. And there was some recruitment that was occurring or that we think might have been occurring also on a high school level. And so, and, and I don't have any, you know, deep information into this.
Understood.
They don't really tell us this stuff. But you're always concerned. And really, I remember when I was in high school, that's when, you know, in, in McAllen, we had the Tri-City Bomb. And they would come around and start talking to you and all that. So it does happen at that level. Even at the junior high level, you start to see it.
You know, we, we as parents, because we're both parents, and I'm talking to most of the parents out, out in, out in the world. If you guys do not acknowledge the fact that your eleven, your ten, your twelve-year-olds are being told to smoke dope or have already seen somebody smoke doing drugs or have been, have been told to join a gang, you guys need to wake up because this is, this goes on. Okay, I'm gonna talk about a story that happened, that happened. I've had a lot of students and a lot of them are, are now peace officers here in Laredo. And about a month ago, I had, he's a, you know, he works, I'm not gonna mention what department he works for, but it was in a task, task force. And he called me and he says, Prof. And he could, his, his, you know, his shorter breath and everything else and goes, I want to thank you. I go, what do you want to thank me for? I want to thank you for teaching me to keep my head cool when I had a gun pointed at me. He goes, I didn't shoot this kid. He was fourteen years old. I just punched him to the ground and took away his gun. And this is a police officer, a grown man with gargling voice that, you know, you can tell that he was crying and thanking me after, after years that he would've been here because we, we sent him to police academy here and the whole nine yards, telling me that in the last, the two weeks prior to that, all he's been busting was fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-olds. He goes, they're using their kids because they go unscathed through the system.
That's right. You see their juveniles. And so, you know, they, they get released. And so they know that they can get away with a lot of things and that's why they utilize our youth. And so it's a big problem. So if you ask me if it's a real concern, it really is a concern. But you know, the city is doing its part also.
Sure.
And so whether it's involvement with, with, with after, after-school activities, third-party funding of Boys and Girls Club and other thing, other establishments, and, and also trying to make sure that we have this, I, I think they call it the safety triangle, you know, home, school to after-school and then home.
Sure.
And if you can do that, you can prevent youths from actually to get into these situations.
The city, most cities do do an excellent job with that. The problem is many parents, we are lax to become parents and they want to become friends. You know, we're not there to become friends of our children. We're, we're a parent. There's a father and mother. You know, we're not friends. We can, we're, we're the best, how can I say, the best counselor for them we'll ever have and director of their actions. Understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, our responsibility is
Exactly, exactly right. And so when you pass that responsibility to somebody else, you've lost them. And I think that's a problem. A lot of parents now work. Both parents need to work, you know, to keep the household. We have a lot of single parents, both mom and dads that are raising kids. The kids get home, they go out and they're, they're out. So, you know, when I, when I moved back in two thousand, I told this to a lot of the, in the city and some cities and the sheriff Juan Garcia, and we were talking, we were sitting down in a meeting, we were talking about that. And I said, right now, Laredo doesn't see the gang problem. But ten, fifteen years from now, Laredo's gonna have a superior gang problem that you all are not gonna be able to do nothing with. We need to start doing programs for the kids throughout the rec centers.
I agree.
And nothing has been done. To the, from eighteen years, nothing has been done. And that's where we faltered. I mean, I think the sheriff does a great job with their pal and so on and so forth.
And their boxing and all that.
But in actuality, we're, we're in the negative. We need to step up the game.
What, and, and we, we do a couple of things, you know, you know, obviously, we've had studies that have demonstrated the poverty rate here in Laredo is very high. But we also have new studies that demonstrate that the poverty down, rate is going down, right? We went from thirty-four, thirty-five percent, almost under thirty percent or twenty-nine or thirty percent in the new studies. And so we're actually going in the right direction. That doesn't mean that people don't need help, but what I'm saying is that, that if we can keep the city moving in the right, right direction, if we can keep growing our economy, if we can keep helping to improve the quality of the jobs that we're bringing in by having higher-paying jobs, which is why we're trying to diversify our economy and why we're trying to make sure that, that new businesses are paying living wages. You know, there's certain things that we're trying to do. We can't control it, but we can, we can try to facilitate those types of businesses as they're coming in. When, as we do that, we hope that we can make it more feasible for parents to have more time with their children. And until we can do that, until we can solve the dilemma of having, you know, a median income that's lower than most of the country or most of the state, except for maybe the valley, well, we have to step up also by having rec centers and, 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 you know, and I will tell you that I have a, you know, a fundamental problem to a certain extent with rec centers that don't get utilized because I think it costs our taxpayers a lot of money.
Sure.
And sometimes I feel like some of these services can be offset through third parties, YMCA's, Boys and Girls Clubs, things like that. But, but we have to fund them appropriately. And they've been doing it for a long time, but they need funding.
The, the other thing that, you know, coming back, I'm, I'm gonna put it back to Dallas. I don't know if Dallas is doing it now, but I remember back in the nineties, they were. Every city, the majority of schools in D I S D would become kind of a rec center after five o'clock. They had, they would teach ballet, they would teach karate, they would teach boxing, music lessons, so on and so forth. This was ongoing for that community in that area. And every school did that. We don't have that here. I mean, we have great schools, we have great, and you, there's, what is it? There's a playground in the back, there's track in the back, and then you have a fence with barbed wire covering it. And that to me is pretty bad.
Yeah, and I, I actually spoke to some of the United Independent School District trustees to try to see if they could open up their facilities to have after-school involvement for the community, right? Partly because I think that we would double the amount of amenities that we had, basketball courts and tennis courts, you know, volleyball stuff, tracks, things that we can use. Because there's very few of them that are open to the public right now. And, and, you know, I grew up in, in McAllen. And so when McAllen had McAllen High School and McAllen High School Memorial High School and Nikiru High School, when I was growing up there, they all had their campuses open. To the day, McAllen High School has their campus open in the evening. So they have, I think, eighteen to twenty or sixteen courts, something like that, that they have in tennis. And then they have the, the track that you can walk on. And they have a practice facility that people can use, kiddos can use. And so I, I try to collaborate with them. But, but as far as, you know, after-school programs, I think U I S C does some.
U I S C does do some.
But funding continues to go down, especially the formulas that they use for funding is based on academic, you know, achievement, right? You know, if you test well, that means you're doing well and you get more funding. And so it's kind of this, this cycle that starts happening. You don't do a little well, they cut funding. So what do you do? You cut extracurricular activities to try to focus on your education. So this is the system that they have in place. I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but I do agree with you that as a society, we have to do a better job of trying to get our children involved in activities that are gonna preclude them or keep them occupied and preclude them from this crime, life of crime that they could run into if they go down that way.
You're absolutely correct. I've, you know, I have a lot of associates that are police officers and run the police office and in the law enforcement arena, maybe I'm gonna put it that way. And I have a gentleman that is, he's a great martial artist and he was a police officer in Louisiana. And he goes, Paul, the problem is with recruiting youngsters to do gang activities and with drugs and so on and so forth is that they get paid very well. He goes, a lot of the moms are on welfare. And these kids are bringing in five, six thousand dollars per week. Do you think the mom's gonna say, don't do that?
No.
And, and I, I stopped and I said, yeah, you know what? You're absolutely correct. They know they're, they might go to juvie. They're not gonna go to jail after that. So they'll do it for two, three years and after that they'll, they'll jump out and do something else.
How do you beat that? You hope that over time, you can at least show positive role models and hopefully they see their moms and their dads not struggling as much because our society's doing a little bit better. Maybe it's idealistic, maybe it's naive, but that's our job as a, as a, as a city council is to try to keep the city moving forward. You know, convert this momentum that we have right now, because we do have momentum, convert it into a truly diverse economy. And we have to convert this, this momentum that we have as a city, as we're, we're growing, you know, on a state level, people are recognizing the importance of Laredo. We have to harness this momentum and create it to a better quality of life for our citizens. And that's what we're trying to do. And the decisions that we're making right now are, hopefully, will foster that reality for us.
Sure. What, what do you see two years from now? What do you, what would you say? You know something, Paul? In two years, I expect Laredo to be at this point.
Wow. In the sense of
The whole scheme of the planning and so on and so forth, what do you say? We matured in our plans? Did we move our plans forward? Or is it just still the same as it is now?
Well, one, if, if we can change this, the perception of, of corruption that occurs on a city level, if we can get, if we can make enough decisions that provide good outcomes as a council, then my goal will be that we can stabilize our city government so that people finally feel proud of their city government, that they feel that, that we're listening to their, their desires, their concerns, that we're taking that into account as we're making decisions. And again, they're not always gonna agree with what we do, but I would like at least to have a council that people believe in and trusted more than they currently do. That would be one thing that I hope two years from now we will see. As far as the city, I'd like to see our median income continue to go up. I'd like to see our living wage discontinue to go up. And if we can track that and we see that we have good progress and that people are getting paid more money and that it's higher than inflation rates, in other words, it's going up at a higher rate than our inflation is going up, then I think we can say that we are doing the right thing. I'd also like to see more, more planning to take place. And if I see that our, our vision, what the citizens came up, which was the comprehensive plan, if we haven't incorporated more elements of that, then we have to take, you know, take a look at it again and find out why aren't we doing some of these things that other cities are doing to, to help mobilize their economy and mobilize their development and kind of decrease some of the costs of development, fire and police and all these sorts of things. And so I, I'd like to at least sort of break that mold over these next two years of, you know, everybody believing that there's no real hope for Laredo. And the last thing is I would love for people to recognize the importance of Laredo. And I said this when I was running for, for council, is that I, I want people to recognize that they're not, this isn't a second-class city. This is, this really is and should be a first-class city. You're talking about a city that has
Amen to that.
That, that has a real deep history, a rich history, a cultural history, and that has a geographic blessing that allows us to, to, to be able to continue to grow both where we're located and the fact that there's really nothing on the outskirts. And we can actually continue to grow slowly but surely to, to become whatever metroplex we want to the right way. We, we control our own destiny. And so now, if we take the time right now to shape our future right now, our children, our grandchildren and so on and so forth, they're gonna be well taken care of. So I, I just want people to stop believing that we're a second-class city and start believing that we're a first-class city and let's take the steps that we need to. And I think in two years, three years, four years, you're gonna see those changes. And if, if really we can't right the ship right away, that's okay. We get up, you know, we fall down, we get up, dust ourselves off and keep at it. We have to have vision. And so I, I hope that that's what I see in the next two years. You know, as far as traffic, I hope we can decrease some of the traffic that we have. Safety, I hope we can control some of these safety concerns. Taxes, I hope we can control some of these appraisal rates that continue to go up. I mean, it, it's not a bad thing when appraisal rates go up because it means that we have a healthy economy, right? It means that our, our properties are worth more. But at the same time, if it's, if it's going too quickly, then it hurts people's pockets because they have escrows built into their, their insurances and their taxes. And so again, I think we have a lot of work to do. I think a lot of it, you can see, you'll see some changes in two years, but a lot of the decisions we're making right now, you're gonna see ten years from now, fifteen years from now.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. And number, number one, I want to thank you for stepping up to the plate.
Of course, sir.
Thank you, Doctor, for standing, standing there. And you know what? You got the horse by the, by the rein and we're gonna do some good in District Six. And then hopefully, your plans and everybody else's can make Laredo go forward. And I think, I think that's a positive direction that we actually needed. And, you know, and God bless Laredo, really.
Absolutely. And just so, you know, you're aware, we, I will be holding a town hall meeting soon. I don't know if, I'm trying to, I have a few projects that I want to present to the public regarding discretionary or what they used to call discretionary public regarding discretionary or what they used to call discretionary, it's district priority funds.
Sure.
I just want to make sure that the projects I present are actually correct. Um, and so there are memorandums of understanding with certain, um, organizations that we need to get in writing first. And once we have those, then I'll bring it to the public and I'll give them several options and then they're gonna get to decide, um, how we spend these district priority funds. You know, I've used these funds for shade structures on pocket parks, um, we've been able to do some tree plantings. Um, there's been a lot of things that we've been able to do with this district priority money, but now, now I, things that I thought needed to get done right away, but now, um, what I, what I want is that we have almost, I think close to $200,000 left. Um, you know, some of that money went to that, um, you know, the shade structure.
Sure.
In John Wells Park over the basketball. I had a young man thank me, uh, recently because he, he says, "It's so hot, but we play there every day and thank you for the shade structure." But I have to, you know, I have to give credit where credit is due and Charlie Sanguea was actually the one that, that started that project. I voted it in, but it was Mr. Sanguea that had been working on that for quite some time and the restroom's out there too. Um, but when we do this town hall meeting, I hope people will direct me, uh, as to what they want to do, the vision that they want for District Six and so it's gonna be nice.
Excellent move and we wish you the best. And, uh, until next time, we'll see you here in Gloves Off. Take care.
Thanks.